Welcome to the July 22, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we come to you humbly today, giving you thanks for everything that we've been allowed to do in our lives and everything that we're doing for the citizens of Sandusky. We pray that you give us the strength, the endurance, to continue to do our very best to serve those in our community regardless of where they are and regardless of what they do. I'd like to send a special prayer for fellow Commissioner Crable and that he has a speedy recovery and that he is able to endure any other procedures that he must have. For all these things, we ask in your name. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Coons.
Here.
Mr. Crable.
Ms. Vargo.
Here.
I'll ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Crable.
So moved.
Second.
There have been, is there a second? There have been a second motion and a second discussion. Mr. Murray has shown up 30 seconds late. I believe you indicated that he is here. Will you pull the commission on that motion to excuse Mr. Crable?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Mr. Crable is excused. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of July the 8th, 2024? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move that we accept the minutes of the July 8th meeting as presented. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda item comments.
Tim Schwager, 362 Sheffield Way. Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioner's staff. Four items, item number, item letter B, which is under the consent agenda. We're beginning to see some items that are under the consent agenda that maybe do not belong there. And this is the settlement with Krogers in Perkins Township. Maybe we can get an explanation of that during the course of the meeting. Item number two, which is the debt for the Justice Center. In my opinion and others' opinions, debt by any other name is still debt. And it's refreshing to see that we decided not to use the certificate of participation to pay for that debt. Under item number three, I believe, I think that this has to do with low to moderate income housing. And we hear a lot about 80% of a certain number to qualify for that housing. And I have not yet heard exactly what 80% means. Is that a certain salary or income every year? I think they have that number based off that 80%. Number four is the public art. It's a little bit confusing. We always thought that the Public and Arts Culture Committee had their own fund or account for that art program, but yet it says in the supporting documents that the city's capital improvement funds will be used. So a little bit of clarification on that issue. That'll be all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional comments from residents on agenda items?
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Sue Doherty. I am the Director of Serving Our Seniors at 310 East Bolts Street. I'm a resident of Sandusky at 1016 Third Street. And I am here this evening to thank you for the work that you've done on item number three, the Housing Development Agreement for the Welcome Home Ohio Program. I cannot emphasize enough how important it is that there be homes in our community that are not at the $200,000, $300,000, and $400,000 range. So thank you so much for all who are responsible for this grant and the work and the planning that it took to bring this about. Please know that many people in our community are grateful to see this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. The responsible parties on our end are Ms. Gilson and her staff and several planning people are responsible for that. So echo, let's go certainly to them.
Tom LaMarcus, 206 48th Street. I want to thank you for changing your opinion of financing on the Justice Center. I appreciate you bailing out of that COPS program. I didn't care for it. I know a couple of you did, but I think the better route has been selected. I shouldn't say that because you haven't voted on it yet, but cart before the horse. And then item number three on the housing agreement, I'm just curious about the numbers as well. 80% of what equals what? What is that median income that's going to qualify to buy one of those homes? And then once you do that, if the price of the home is, let's say, $150,000, is that person going to qualify then to be able to get a mortgage for that home? I think maybe not. Now, I don't know. I didn't, I should have investigated that further. But then there's also one other item within the writings of, and maybe it's not this one, but I think it might be part of it, of the individual that buys the home has to remain in the home for 20 years, or if they don't remain in the home, and maybe I'm on the wrong agreement for the housing. But Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac may not finance a home if it's got that restriction because they take a strong look at that. I know we had to fight them for a long time on financing homes in Lakeside because many of those homes are on leaseholds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaMarcus. We'll attempt to answer those questions as that legislation comes before us.
Hello, I'm Ryan Hodges with Firelands Habitat for Humanity. I wanted to thank you guys for, number three as well, for your continued partnership and special thanks to Colleen for even making me aware of this potential agreement. So we're so grateful to help these low-income families, especially as every house we sell is less than the cost it was to build it. So your partnership means a great deal to us and to our continued future. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from the audience on agenda items? If not, Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation? Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license for Sandusky Bay Lodging. Item B, approval of new national opioid settlement with Kroger. Item C, approval of budget amendment number two. Item D, approval of transit agreement with Masavi. Item E, approval of easement agreement for 126 event venue.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and liquor licenses, what is your pleasure? Mr. Murray.
I move for the approval of these ordinances pursuant to the section indicated in the communication as well as the passage of item A, which is the liquor license.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. I think the question from resident regarding item B, perhaps Mr. Hastings, you could give us just a brief explanation of what's going on there with that piece of legislation?
Actually, we have outside counsel that helps us on this as well. But there is a national litigation various states have made against various pharmaceutical suppliers on opioid addiction and opioid prescriptions. As they have come to be settled over the time Sandusky gets a share of the settlement, so long as we agree to get that share, our alternative is to sue the entity ourselves, which is usually not very feasible for a city our size. I think so far we've collected about $60,000 in opioid settlement money from various sources. It goes into a special fund, and I don't know that we've decided how we're going to spend it yet, but we do have that money.
But you, as our law director, recommends this legislation.
Oh, yes, yes.
It makes sense to do this instead of going it alone and trying to get 70, 80, $90,000.
Correct.
Got it. Good explanation. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and liquor license.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Those ordinances and liquor license are passed. Ms. Myers, we present item number one, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed adopting the amended rules of order for the Sandusky City Commission and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Commissioner?
Commissioner Coons.
Move for adoption of the resolution under item one in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $10 million for the purpose of paying costs of construction, renovation, furnishing, and equipping the city's Justice Center and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
We need to accept the fiscal officer certificate first.
That is correct. Thank you, Ms. Myers. Prior to that, asking for a motion on that ordinance, I need a motion to accept the fiscal officer certificate. That is strictly a formality that I forgot.
So moved.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That motion has passed. Returning to item number two, I think we had, do we have a motion and a second on that ordinance?
Yes.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, do we have a date or an idea of when it opens just publicly so we could share that a little more, what we're thinking?
Ms. Doherty?
Through the President to Commissioner Vargo. We do have about two or three weeks left on that construction, and we plan on doing an open house, excuse me, we plan on doing an open house later around September-ish, once the judge clears his schedule and we get them all moved back from the service center back to the Justice Center. So we'll have a big ribbon cutting in, also open house for citizens to come through and walk through the entire facility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments, additional discussion, Commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just curious to understand how it is that we handle the accounting for this internally, 40% being attributed to the municipal courts, 60% attributable to the Sandusky Police Department. We're all, we're a single government, and these bonds are issued by the city of Sandusky. Is there, and I should know the answer to this, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten, is there a memorandum of understanding with the court in terms of funding as we move forward? I'd just like to better understand that.
If I may, we did have a judgment entry from the court where the judge agreed to that split when we started this project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a program agreement with Welcome Home Great Lakes and Firelands Habitat for Humanity for the development of housing through the Welcome Home Ohio Program and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, there's a question regarding who qualifies for that. I know you have the answer for that, or can shed with us some light on how that happens. And I think it might be enlightening for all of us in the public to hear how these folks are qualified and who's doing that qualifying.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity. So to the question about area median income, which is determined by HUD, I'll speak specifically for Erie County. At 80% of median income, a buyer, a single buyer in a one-person household could not make more than $51,000 to purchase this home. For a two-person family, 58,350 is the restriction, that income up to that level. I'll jump all the way to a family of four. The 80% of, I'm sorry, 80% of area median income is $72,900. So as you know, or as most of you know, a mortgage, you cannot pay more than 30%, typically more than 30% of your monthly income. So the way we're figuring these mortgages, and we've had a very successful meeting just today, actually, with a local lender who's very interesting, interested in both permanent financing as well as construction financing for this project, and have indicated to us they have a very long list of pre-qualified buyers that would be potential purchasers for these homes.
That fit into those income levels.
That fit into these income levels, absolutely. And working with our partner, which is part of Welcome Home Ohio, the Neighbor Works organization out of Toledo, they will be providing financial literacy counseling to those folks that are already qualified to make sure that they are ready for home purchase and will be successful in that home.
So, Ms. Gilson, therefore, the qualifying of the person does not fall on the city?
It does not.
It falls on the lender?
Absolutely.
And we have a lender in place that's interested in doing that, and it's pre-qualified people?
Absolutely.
What a great concept. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Ms. Gilson, I wonder if you could explain to the public what you previously explained to me. You could look at this and you could think, okay, this is kind of a one-time thing. It's a $100,000 buy-down, maybe get 30 homes done, but that's not how it works because those homes then get sold, and then some of that money comes back into the program. So we can recycle this to a certain extent. It's going to peter out at some point in time. But I think you had an estimate in terms of the total number of homes that would be purchased or supported through this process.
I would be happy to answer that. We have committed to the state of Ohio that we will build 14 homes. With the recycling of dollars, we will potentially build up to 34 homes with this program. The dollars that we receive from the state of Ohio, we will purchase the finished unit and then sell it for a reduced amount. That sale comes directly back to the city, and will go right back into this program to build more units. So it's a win-win, and it's actually a model that the state of Ohio was very interested in and encouraged us to participate in this program.
Terrific.
There was another question regarding, there was an area median income, and I apologize, but 20-year, exactly. That is a state-of-Ohio requirement that the buyer commit to a 20-year, that the home remain available to people at 80% of area median income for 20 years. So let's say someone were to purchase that home but was relocated, they would have to then sell it to someone who fits those qualifications.
Same income level?
Absolutely.
So you're not going to put a higher income level than a home like that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I would just like to say I don't know how it gets much better than this. I mean, this is a great program, and housing is a tough, tough nut to crack. It helps that we have the money up front, but the way this was put together, I mean, this is textbook. This is the stuff you read about in a planning class. You know, you've got financial literacy, you've got local labor they're going to use, you've got financial institutions on the back end to pick up the financing. I just think it's, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
I don't think it's been mentioned often enough, and you just touched on it, Commissioner Pajali, and that is the local labor aspect of it.
Yeah.
These homes, as they come in, our contractor is committed to using local labor to do the electrical hookups, to do the plumbing hookups, to do whatever the finished carpentry has to do to put this together. So it really is, as you said, Mr. Pajali, it is a win-win for everybody, 34 homes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I left out, we were able to partner with the land bank. So we were able to use some land bank lots and make those cost-effective, so.
Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. With our thanks to everybody involved. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to the Sandusky Education Foundation for a portion of the cost to purchase five sculptures, accepting the donation of five sculptures for the city's permanent public art collection, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item four in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I happen to be one of the ones that love these sculptures and this artwork around town. In the beginning, I was a little, what the heck is this, you know, when you drive by, but now I'm getting to where I like it, so maybe that's the old hippie coming out of me.
Have you ever sliced a ball into the one at Mills?
I hope not.
Mr. Blair, I wonder if you can give us, there was a question regarding how that money exchange works and why some of our money and some of the donation, I wonder if you could expound on how that worked, certainly worked to our benefit, I think.
Thanks for that question. I would defer to Director Reader for that answer, though, because she manages all the funds.
So I believe the question was, it mentions that it's getting paid out of the Capital Projects Fund. The Public Art Commission does have a separate line in the Capital Projects Fund. They are funded each year from 1% of the admissions tax from the prior year, so those funds then get deposited into this Capital Projects Fund. It's called Public Art, and that's where this expenditure will be coming out of. So it is the correct accounting and correct fund for this project.
And literally, the $100,000 donation has stretched their performance dramatically.
So I don't believe we're taking in the $100,000. We're just contributing $30,000 to them.
Yeah, we're contributing the $30,000 to them.
Yes.
For the total of 130 was what the purchase of the sculptures cost.
Yes.
So the Sandusky Education Foundation was the steward of that, and then they made sure they got here safely and ensured that whole process and coordinated with the artist's team, which it was very, I learned a little bit about international customs, which was interesting. And so now the five sculptures are in Sandusky and have been installed, and they will donate them to the city if you accept the expenditure in that donation.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with proposed asbestos abatement and demolition project of 937 West Washington Street, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Myers, we pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to the Notice of Award and Grant Agreement for the ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant with the Ohio Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Agency for the Sandusky Fire Department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that ordinance, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?[1558.28] Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to the Notice of Award and Grant Agreement for the ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment, Retention, and Resiliency Grant with the Ohio Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Agency for the Sandusky Fire Department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Chief, you rarely get to speak. I wonder if you'd speak tonight and tell us what we're doing here.
Basically, at the end of 2021, we were awarded $506,594 through the ARPA fund. Up until now, we've been sending in all the paperwork and getting reimbursed for those salaries and benefits. They're covered by those three firefighters. Basically, what they're going to do now is disperse the remainder of the funds, and then we have to continue to send them the documentation to justify where that amount comes from. I really am not sure why they decided to disperse all the ones at the ends. The only thing I can say is that in the email that they sent us offering this opportunity was, says, "Due to unforeseen circumstances, some of the programs have not been implemented as planned, nor have funds been expended as budgeted." So not necessarily our issue, but across the state. I know at the beginning of this process, with our meetings with the state grant people, they were saying that they wanted to make sure, all the federal government wanted to make sure all this money was spent. So I think they're giving people an opportunity to have a longer time period to spend it. We'll be able, instead of ending December 31st, we'll be able to take this till the end of June. So if we weren't to go through the remaining $273,000 by the end of the year, we can extend it into 2025 to use those funds up.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Chief. Good explanation. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. It concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. First, I have a donation for Sandusky Transit. We'd like to thank Huron Township for their $20,000 donation for 2024. This is the second year Huron Township has made the donation to the transit system, and the funds will be used towards operating expenses if I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
That motion is accepted. It was our thanks to Huron Township.
The next topic, I want to say thanks to all the staff and citizens and everybody that paid a, or participated in the Ironman yesterday. Great event. The commissioners got some medals again for their participation. I know Mr. Waddington swam in the event, he said. So.
They had to sell the corpse cart out for him.
James Stacy, our transit administrator, did his first triathlon, so that was pretty exciting. And so the Ironman was, you know, a real good showing. I think there was 1,400 participants and a lot of people in town, so kudos to them. The finance, the City of Sandusky's 2023 audit has been released. The full report is available on the city's website under the Finance Department. The finance team takes pride in having a clean audit and would like to thank all the employees and staff for continuing to be great stewards of taxpayer funds. Thanks, Michelle and her staff, for doing an outstanding job. The Public Works, the City of Sandusky is hosting two public meetings and conducting an online survey to get public input for the Sandusky Safe Streets Action Plan, a significant initiative aimed at ensuring the safety of all community members traveling on Sandusky streets. The online survey can be reached at www.cityofsandusky.com. The open house will be Wednesday, July 24th. You can attend one of the two open houses. One is from 8:00 to 9:30 at Sandusky City Hall, 240 Columbus Ave. The second one is on the 24th as well, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Sandusky Rec at Mills, 1918 Mills Street. And ODOT's contractor has mobilized the Sycamore Line and Mylan Road to complete Phase 3 of concrete repairs along these sections of roadway. Work is expected to last several weeks, and traffic will be reduced to one lane and expect delays and be patient. Otherwise, Chief Oliver and staff will be busy. And then a reminder to all residents and property owners to please complete the water service line inventory on our website at www.cityofsandusky.com backslash waterlines. I'd like to take a moment to thank the REC Advisory Committee for the recommendations that have been submitted to the commission. Also, I've briefed most of the commissioners, I think all of the commissioners on, we plan on going to a design-build process to construct the REC Center. It'll likely be about 90-day process, so we'd like to, I'd like to get a motion from the commission to direct staff to start that process. We have to advertise, accept bids, and hire a criteria architect for that process. So we'd like to get that process started as soon as possible, so it's going to take a little while for us to get somebody on board.
You asking for a motion?
Yes, I am.
To move forward with that?
Yes, sir.
Question? Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
And then lastly, on that topic, we do plan on having meetings internally with our staff as far as the programming that will be going to the REC Center. One of our key participants, Tonda Frisbee, is out, so we want to wait till she gets back to work and along with Colleen and Jason and Chris to analyze the programming and what that's going to look like at the REC Center based on the recommendations that have been made. And we will bring that back to you before you award any contractor, any of the bid that goes out for the criteria architects. So we'll make sure that that programming piece and information is provided to you before that.
So, Mr. Orzak, if I understand this correctly, we have a 90-day window between now and hiring the criteria architect, we believe. And in that 90-day period, staff will return to commission recommendations on programming.
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Happy to address any questions.
Comments or questions for city manager?
Mr. Commissioner?
Mr. Goode.
Just one question, John, and it's pertaining to any individual who would be responsible for working with other organizations that try to write grants and bring grants into the city for specific purposes. Do we have somebody in place that actually would do that work, or is that something that we'd have to hire somebody to do? How would that work?
Generally, we have staff that perform those grants. Each of the departments have their own grant administrator or someone that files grants. The police department submits their own grants. The fire department submits theirs. Public Works has quite a bit of grants and their staff file that, file those grants for the city. And Tom Horstman, our communications director, has been involved in that. So we have a number of people within the city that have grants, grant writing and grant opportunities that are submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments? Additional comments for Mr. Orzak? Not with moved items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Commissioner?
Mr. Goode.
A couple things I wanted to mention. I know we briefly talked about this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. We had a citizen that asked for information about the old Cardinal Building and that LLC. And basically, based on my understanding, they don't receive any benefit right now. They don't receive anything from us, the city. I think the challenge for the citizen was that they shouldn't be coming back to us to receive any kind of grant or anything. And so I just wanted to make sure that that particular LLC is not, based on my knowledge, they're not receiving any kind of benefit at all. They own the property. So I just wanted clarification about that, so I can be clear and I'll have a solid answer.
We've turned to Ms. Gilson on a couple of occasions that I can recall for some clarification on that, and I think you can share with staff, share with the commission and with the public exactly what our position is with those particular developers.
Sure. Thank you for the question. At this moment, the developers, the owners of the property are not receiving any grant benefit from the City of Sandusky.
Okay. Thank you.
Status-wise, they do not, they have not obtained, they do not enjoy any special status with this city. They are like any potential developer. If they come with a business model that works, they certainly are welcome to make application. We would review that and make a judgment on that based strictly on their merits. They have not done that since we revoked the last grant that we had awarded, given to them, and they had not performed on. Is that correct, Ms. Gilson?
They have not. We did have a conversation with them late last year, and at that time today did not return to us any sort of application for funding or a bona fide development plan, for that matter.
Excellent. That makes it very clear for me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
What about, when's the last time we did an inspection of the building? That's been sitting there, I believe, five, at least five years now. Has somebody been inside internally to look at it? If it's even, does it need to come down? Is it viable, you know?
Through Commissioner Brady, Commissioner Waddington. It is registered.
You're the first, you're the first person to break the rule of not through the chair.
Forgot to do it last time.
Glad it's you. You've got a badge. The other guy's got a gun.
We had to finish out this meeting like that, and I forgot to do it last time.
I think that, I think that resolution took immediate effect.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for giving this moment, though.
I forget where I was going.
Cardinal store.
It is registered with the Vacant Abandonment Building Fund, and in order for that to happen, I know our fire marshal has been in there and done a site inspection. What the condition is inside, I'm not really sure. I would have to consult him, but he has been in there with it as part of the registration.
The process, Chief, for getting inside and doing an inspection, is it cumbersome one? Is it not? Or we just can't walk in and say, hey, I'm here to inspect your building, can we?
We can ask to go in and do an inspection. If it's vacant like that, we usually have to send them a few letters in the mail and get them to respond. Once we get them to respond, then they usually are pretty good. Most people are pretty good about setting up an inspection. There is a few vacant buildings where the owners won't allow us to, and we've continued to take them, try to take them to court in order to make that happen. This particular vacant building, they were, they had no problem registering it or letting us in there.
It is registered as a vacant building. We have an ordinance for that. Okay, so they're literally complying with the law at this point in time.
Correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
I wonder if part of registering the building, does that include an inspection from us?
It does from the fire department, yes.
Okay, and how often do they have to register?
Every year, as long as it remains vacant.
So would they have to register, what, in 2025, maybe?
Yes.
So maybe then we can schedule an inspection again as part of the registration process.
We can do that. And there's been a few different vacant buildings in town where we've actually invited the building department along with us just so that we can get, you know, their opinion on the structural stability of the building, too. So that is definitely, we can definitely make that happen when that time approaches.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Additional items of old business? Items of new business. Any items of new business, Commissioners? Seeing no one bringing up new business, I'll ask for any items from the public on any item that pertains to city business. I'd ask you to keep your comments to five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Paul Harden. I am a longtime Sandusky resident, entrepreneur, real estate owner here in the city. Recently, my father passed in 21. So what I've been doing, a little bit of research about the zoning here in Erie County. Whether you know or not, in the First, Second, and Third Street area, ending at Farwell, coming through Sunnyside to Launchmont Area, Huntington, and going to East Parish, those areas are zoned non-commercial and non-ARBNB eligible. These areas are less than a half mile from the amusement park. So therefore, the city's explanation for not zoning these areas to be able to be utilized for that purpose is they have a shortage of rentals in the area, which is untrue. If you look at the urban housing list that's posted monthly, it's 50 to 60 or 70 properties on there. So the real issue is, the properties that are eligible are not affordable to the renters here in this community. So I think that landlords and entrepreneurs like myself shouldn't be held to a disadvantage. And most of those areas, from my research through preparation for litigation, are habitated by minorities. First, Second, and Third Street, East End, Farwell, minorities, blacks. Sunnyside, black. Launchmont, black. Huntington, black. East Parish, black. So we have to look at that. Is that redlining? Is that predatory? Is that a disadvantage for minorities to advance through generational wealth to not pay as a landlord, get $1,200 a month, ballpark right now, or getting $12,000 a month off Airbnb? So we have to look at this. It's outdated. I've done my research. I actually had a conversation with the lady over the zone, and she just said, really didn't have an explanation, but the one she gave me. I said, well, that's kind of generic. I've been an executive with the Department of Justice for 27 years out of Saturday. So I sit around my desk a lot and watch Sandusky's activities with the register and looking at different things through the auditor's office, doing a little bit of research when I have some time in my office. So I wanted to bring that to the forefront, so maybe you can take a peek at that. Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a home less than a quarter of a mile to maybe five-block radius from the carway, and you can't rent that Airbnb. WEC's out my back window. All commercial, Cleveland Road is right there. Hotels, eateries. I'm surrounded. But my zoning says I shouldn't make any money. So I just wanted to express that, so that that would be something maybe to entertain. Doesn't make a lot of sense for properties across town to have Airbnb access, and the ones directly in proximity to Cedar Point to not. And for those areas to be basically, you know, populated by minorities, homeowners like myself. All right. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on any item that pertains to city business?
Good evening. I am here to ask for your moral support and your leadership at a public forum that's serving our seniors is holding on August 15th. And if I may, here's an invitation for each of you as commissioners. I'm fortunate to have the support and the leadership of our city manager, Colleen Gilson, Erin Blair. Colleen will be a panelist at this forum. Our city manager has agreed to be in the audience, and so has Erin Blair, a city planner. I'm here this evening to ask if you would lend me your leadership and support by being in the audience as well. Serving our seniors is working to attract 200 to 300 market rate runners at age 60 or older to attend our forum as we discuss a solution to address the affordable housing shortage for retirees. I recognize that affordable housing is a problem for people of all ages. However, I work for a geriatric social service that advocates for older people and their ability to maintain their health and their ability to maintain their functional independence. And it's for that reason only that the audience is restricted to those who are 60 and older. If you think about the individuals who retired 10 to 15 years ago and what houses were selling for, and then you invested that income to be your nest egg to support you, and you put it in a CD that, which generated next to nothing, and you tapped into that each month to pay for your apartment rent. Well, today, that apartment rent, that was $650 to $750 per month, is now ranging in the 900-plus to 1,100. And I don't know that there are older people that have prepared themselves to live the rest of their retirement in market rate rent, knowing that their rent is going to continue to increase going forward. So for that reason, we're having the forum, and it is my hope that I am successful getting all Erie County leaders from townships, cities, and villages to be in the same room with an audience of older adults who are paying market rate rent, which means they don't qualify to live in a senior high-rise, de-subsidized housing, or the Osborne School that's going to be made available for people within a certain income. If you're just a smidge over that income, your only course of action is to pay market rate rent. And it is, although we have over 4,000 people who are renters, that doesn't mean that they're all paying market rate rent. So it seems to me that the size of the population that needs this problem addressed for their income bracket appears to me to be manageable. However, you all have circles of influence that I do not have. You're in positions of power that I do not hold. And I think if we could bring all of our leaders who work within Erie County together in the same room, it is entirely possible that we can figure out a solution, much like you've done with the sale of homes. Can we figure out a similar solution for individuals who are older and have to pay market rate rent? And whatever we learn from this exercise can also be applied to people who are under the age of 60. So I leave with you the invitation, and if you are able to attend, would you do us the favor of calling in or emailing your RSVP, because we are planning for seating? So thank you for your time and your attention, and thank you for your leadership of the City of Sandusky.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. A couple of items. You know, local government receives a lot of criticism, some warranted, some not so much. So I'm going to take this opportunity on behalf of the citizens and out-of-towners that use the Battery Park area to thank city manager Orzak for getting on top of an issue there with the parking lot and also the driveway, going back to the Sandusky Sandin Club, and also the condition of the east wall at Battery Park. We've been trying for seven years under the former city manager to try to get the city to address that issue with Battery Park Marina, and John came through last week and discussed the issue with Battery Park Marina, and it was taken care of. So thank you very much, sir. The second item pertains to possible conflicts of interest. I'm going to direct this towards Mr. Brady if I can. I'm going to be diplomatic about it. Don't worry. You're not going to bang the gavel. You shouldn't have to. I run EES. I, myself, and four other people run a social media site here in Sandusky. And a lot of times, we receive private information, and then we post it. Last week, we received a message pertaining to the meeting on June 24th regarding a change order for sewer work on Warren Street, $88,000 change order. Mr. Brady was going to recuse himself from that, because you have family there. And in the end, you ended up voting on a motion and an ordinance. So I don't know how you guys want to handle that, if it's, you know, fine with everyone. So I don't know how you guys want to handle that, if it's, you know, fine with everybody, but I hate to see a city commissioner or any public official get in trouble over ethics.
I can tell you, Mr. Schwanger, exactly how we're going to handle it. I spoke with our law director after that meeting. I did intend to recuse myself. I made a mistake and voted, which is easy to do in the fog of war, so to speak. But in speaking with our law director, he indicated, gave me the legal opinion that I absolutely do not have a conflict of interest in that.
Okay.
Had he said otherwise, I would have gone to the minutes at the next meeting and asked that they be rescinded, and we would have revoted on that. Absolutely not necessary.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yep.
Not a problem. Additional comments from the public on any item that pertains to city business? I think we've worn them out.
Move to a jury.
Move to a jury. For a jury.